Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the July 6, 2020 Clovis City Council meeting, and welcome. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distancing guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city will be implementing changes to participate in council meetings. The city council will be open to the public. We will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may enter council chambers. The meeting will be webcast at the address that is on the screen. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meeting by accessing the webcast at the link listed, providing written comment at the same website, participating by phone, or coming to the city council meeting in person. We are practicing social distancing, and we can only accommodate a maximum of 16 citizens at one time. I will call the meeting to order and ask council member Flores to lead us in the flag's list.
Please join me in leading our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jose. With the clerk, we'll call roll, please.
Councilmember Ashbeck?
I'm here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Moana Tua?
Here.
Councilmember Wayland?
Here.
And Mayor Bessemer.
Here. We come to the presentation proclamation portion of the meeting. It's Jeff Aiello here. I didn't recognize you up in front, Jeff. This is a very interesting situation. We have a lot of talent in Clovis, and we've always known that. But Jeff Aiello, one of our local journalists slash filmmaker, okay, has actually racked up quite a few notable accomplishments that have helped our valley become a force to be reckoned with in award shows, much to the chagrin of some of the larger cities, thankfully. So it's my pleasure to present Jeff with a proclamation recognizing him and his many accomplishments. Whereas Jeff Aiello picked up a motion picture camera for the first time at Yosemite High School in 1985 and remained behind one ever since, and whereas Mr. Aiello believes in making television shows as authentically as possible. Excellent photography, smart storytelling, compelling characters, and capturing the moment when it really happens is what he strives for in producing television shows. And whereas Mr. Aiello worked for the Walt Disney Company, ABC, for 15 years prior to launching his company, 1830, and created, executive produced two popular series for the Live Well Network, and Mr. Aiello's strong background in producing and production led to his most recent position in Disney, ABC's television group as a showrunner on two successful series for Disney, the Live Well Network. And Mr. Aiello is a broadcast production and management professional with over 30 years of experience working in television. And Mr. Aiello is recipient of three Northern California-area Emmy Awards for Silent Sacrifice, the story of Japanese-American incarceration, Outside with Greg Aiello, Iceland, and for Outside Beyond the Lens, Switzerland. Jeff's work in educating the public with the series Tapped Out and American Grown, My Job Depends on Accents, how agriculture is intricately woven into our local lives and our local economy, and highlights the important place agriculture plays in our valley, our state, our nation, and our world. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Clovis, on behalf of its citizens, does hereby honor and recognize Jeff Aiello with the proclamation for the city of Clovis set unto my hand and signed by a machine this date. Jeff, your work in recognizing the importance of agriculture and the link to water and the problems that we've had as a valley and how we got here are really important. And I really liked your mini-series about the Japanese internment. There were people who were in Clovis High, just right down the area here, who were pulled out of school and sent to an internment camp while they were in high school. It's a dark cloud in our history, and I think your series really accented the suffering and the sacrifice and how our Japanese-Americans rebounded and overcame. So Jeff, would you like to say anything?
One of the things I loved about Silent Sacrifice, too, is that it also showcased Clovis as one of the islands in a giant sea of turbulence during that time in World War II, where there was a lot of anti-Japanese-American sentiment. There was a lot of racism. There was a lot of hate. Clovis was one of the great cities in California that didn't go down that road, that in fact all came together at the train station when the local Japanese-Americans that were from this area, which did not go to the Fresno Fairgrounds, like a lot of people think. Most of the folks from Clovis that lived here went directly out to Poston, Arizona. And the citizens of Clovis gathered at the train station and sang songs and brought cookies and said, "We'll see when you get back," and were supportive of that population that went out there. And it makes me proud. I'm honored. You know, I grew up in Bass Lake. I went to Yosemite High School, lived all over the United States, working in television stations, came back here in the late 90s, and ran the production department at ABC-30 for a long time before Disney moved me over to the Live Well Network. Excuse me. As a boy, my grandparents, Cheney and Joe Aiello, they owned the Vella Market, which was right next door to where Luna's is now. So when Luna's expanded into that space some years ago, they took the space of that little narrow grocery store and butcher shop that my grandparents had for many years. And so as a kid, I grew up running around the streets of Old Town Clovis. So this means a lot to me. I want you guys all to know that, and I appreciate all of you guys for that.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Generally, we would give you a hug, but we're not doing that today.
We'll do the airbox. Can I come up?
Yes, absolutely. Now we come to the public comment portion of the meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any item that is not listed on the agenda. We have several written comments that we will get to. Do you have anybody in the chambers who would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, do we have anyone on the web wanting to address the council on any item?
None.
We have none. Mr. Clerk, do we have any written comments that are requested to be read into the record?
None.
Okay. I thought there was one that they requested to be read into the record, but it may also be...
For item 23.
Okay. There is one item where there was a request regarding how we plan on using CARES Act funds, and we're going to handle that in item 23.
My mistake, Mayor. Item 25 for that one. There is a comment for item 23 that requested to be read into the record as well.
Okay. We'll do that when we do item 23. Okay, in regards to, there's no other public comment. I will close public comments. In regards to ordinances and resolutions, with respect to the approval of resolutions and ordinances, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance, and unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution or ordinance be read in full, further reading of the resolution or ordinance shall be deemed waived by the unanimous consent of the council. Come to the consent calendar. There are two items on the consent calendar that are going to be pulled. Item number 12, staff has requested to pull it because of some noticing requirements, and will be brought back at a future meeting. And item number 14, there's a public comment on item number 14, so we're going to pull item number 14. Does any member of the council wish to pull any item on the consent calendar?
I have a comment on one. I don't know that we need to pull it tonight, but item number five is the quarterly report from Boot. And maybe at some point, we could have a public discussion about the kind of state of Boot and what its prognosis is and sort of their lack of events and how that will impact the city of Clovis. So maybe not today, but I'd be curious to know in a future meeting if we could have a public discussion about that.
Any other member of the council wish to pull consent calendar item? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to pull a consent calendar item other than item 14? Is there anyone on the web?
None.
Great, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar absent item number 12. That will be moved to a date uncertain, date uncertain, and we'll hear item 14 tonight.
Second, if you have a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 14, general services approve waiving the normal bidding procedures and allowing pre-award for needlepoint bipolar ionization systems and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Shauna?
Well, I've never really dealt with this before, where we had a question, and I didn't really know what the question was. Can we have this and ask their question? Because it was pulled by somebody online, right?
Yes, it was pulled by Raquel White, and she is available right now.
Sure, why don't we bring her in now, and we'll ask the question? Maybe Shauna, you can give us the Reader's Digest on this.
What this is? Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so let me move this forward. The needlepoint bipolar ionization system is a way to use positive and negative ions to clean the air in the city buildings. And so we are researching the different costs and the different ways to install it and getting some ideas of cost from different vendors, but we didn't want to wait until the 20th to try to get this done and get it installed as soon as possible. There are approximately 59 different air conditioning units throughout the city in all the different buildings, including the fire stations, city hall, courtyard, animal services, all those different buildings. So that's what this system is about. It has been proven to eliminate the COVID virus.
Great, thank you. Can we bring in our comment?
Aye.
You have been unmuted.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Raquel White from CFA. I am concerned about this project because waiving the normal bidding procedure to pre-award the ionization system lacks transparency. It's not really clear if the estimates include both equipment and installation. The report, the staff report lists installation estimates over $200,000, and the staff report also mentions that staff is seeking quotes from other vendors assessing the completion of the project by city staff or a combination of city staff and outside vendors. Keeping in mind, it is the total value of the project that determines whether the work must be bid out. The city may not split the project into multiple pieces to stay under the bid threshold and self-perform any of the work. All the work in question must be performed by a licensed, registered, and insured contractor. I do realize the city is signatory to the California Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act and can perform work as long as all the work, including materials and labors and other associated costs, do not exceed the QUP threshold of $60,000. This project appears that it will exceed the QUP threshold, and no components may be performed by city staff or a combination of vendors and city staff. So if the city moves forward utilizing city crews to perform work on the project, it would be in violation of Public Contract Code, Section 22032. This section requires projects that exceed $60,000 be competitively bid. That is my comment for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Are there any other public comments on this item?
I had a question for Ms. White.
Yes, Ms. White?
Yes.
Okay. This is Bob Wayland. I'm a council member here. And you identified yourself as being from CSAC, and that may mean different things to different people. I was wondering if you could tell me what that acronym stands for?
Absolutely, Mr. Wayland. I was in the meet, I introduced my organization last year sometimes. I'm sure you guys remember. Yeah, right. But CSAC stands for Construction Industry Support, excuse me, Construction Industry Force Account Council. We are a construction industry-supported organization dedicated to public contract code compliance and education. We do not represent a specific contractor, but rather advocate on behalf of the construction industry to ensure compliance with the Public Contract Code, fair bidding opportunities, and proper awarding of public contracts.
Thank you, Ms. White. I thought you were actually with the county statewide organization that goes by the same name of CSAC, and so that's why I was puzzled. I appreciate the clarification.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jose, your light's on? Your light's off? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Do we have any comments from the council on item number 14?
Mayor, I guess I would ask, Scott, I mean, can you comment on your interpretation of the code that Ms. White mentioned?
Sure, my microphone's on. Hi. The city is part of the UPCCAA, the Uniform Construction Cost Accounting Act, so that relaxes the formal bidding requirements. She does note one thing, I guess the staff report would suggest authorizing staff to go up to $215,000. The current informal bidding limit in the city's ordinance in pursuant to state law is $200,000, so anything under $200,000 is subject to the informal bidding as opposed to the formal bidding. So if council wishes, you could limit that to $200,000. I guess I would ask staff, based on the bids you've received or the proposals you've received under the informal process, if you can live with the $200,000. But other than that, it's really just your typical pre-authorization or pre-award authorization other than the fact that you may need to limit that to $200,000.
Shauna, is there a reason why you didn't ask for 200 and you asked for 215? I mean, is that an essential piece of this puzzle?
Without providing detailed information about vendors, we have gotten one quote back that was in that ballpark, not exactly that dollar amount. And part of the reason why we're looking at whether staff could do some is expediency. And that's why we're here today, too. With the COVID situation, we need to get this in as quickly as we can. And the ability of our staff, potentially, and we haven't decided yet because we're still waiting for all of our quotes to come back, our staff to be able to install some of it as well as outside staff, if we can work together and get this done in a week or two, we would rather do that.
If I could add, Mr. Mayor, one additional comment. I think under the city's initial emergency order, declaring the emergency and authorizing Luke as the Director of Emergency Services to have certain authority, I think this would fall within that authority as well to make certain purchases, do certain things under the emergency, and then come back to council, obviously, with an update at some future meeting, the next meeting, I think, would be authorized under the city's original emergency order. So again, under the emergency, Luke, as the Emergency Services Director, has additional authorities to make emergency purchases, to do certain things that are deemed to be under the need of the emergency. So I guess if council finds that this meets that definition, I think you can make that finding, and it could be supported as well under that basis.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
My only feedback on that is the staff report says authorize the city manager, not the emergency services manager. It wasn't written with the emergency hat on, potentially. And I don't, I'm not opposed to the transaction, but it probably is not quite right in terms of...
It hasn't been discussed under that, yes.
Either needs to be $200,000 or move to the COVID-19 section of the discussion. Isn't it 210 now? Didn't they raise it? I don't have the...
It may have...
I don't have it in the...
Shauna's asking if that amount got raised to 210. It fluctuates every five years. I'm not familiar that it raised 210.
I'd have to look it up myself.
I mean, I guess what we could do, if the council's leaning that way, is just say up to the informal bidding limit amount, whether it's 200, 210, whatever it might be. I don't think it rises to the 215, though.
No, that was a rounding up. I suppose you could come back at the next meeting on the 20th and need an additional sum of money under the emergency services authority. That might be different.
There are some facilities that we receive quotes on that right now are closed to the public. Those facilities could wait.
Even with the informal, you are still receiving bids. You are still reviewing bids, looking for the lowest responsible.
Right.
And you're just asking the ability to do that without having to present it all because of expediency, correct?
Right. And to get these bids requires these companies to come on site and look at all 59 units. So it takes some time to get it all together. We have received one, and the other two we're expecting this week.
Okay. And I just wanted to disclose for the council, I mean, when I first got on, I questioned a lot of the informal bidding processes with Lou, with John, and many of those have been explained in which we use, for example, this contracting pool or recommendations from other trusted groups that we belong to in the industry to purchase certain things. And it has made me very comfortable with how the staff has operated in sort of when they waive and/or request us to waive the bidding processes. And so with that, I am very comfortable with what the staff has been doing, because every time I see it, it does, because I come from the nonprofit sector, it does make me go, why are we waiving it? Why this time? Why are we going direct? And each time, the explanation from the staff has been one that has been justified, valid, and also shows that they have sort of their, you know, all what we would expect is done. So I just wanted to say that.
Good. And that's part of the reason why we asked for just the materials quote, to see what would the price be if we did it ourselves. The problem with that is we have a really small crew, and it's going to be hard to get it done very quickly.
Plus, I would imagine if we're installing it, we're potentially avoiding a warranty at some point, depending on what the people tell us?
There wasn't. There was still a one-year warranty on the item. They're fairly simple devices. I was quite surprised. Yeah, pretty amazing.
Any, I don't know if I close public comment, so I will just ask if there's any other members of the public present who would like to comment on this item. Is there anyone on the web?
No.
Great, thank you. Then I will close public comment, come back to the council for action or further discussion.
I'll make a motion that we waive the bidding procedures up to the authorized amount of money, whatever that is, if it's 210 or 200 for the ionization system, and ask staff to come back if they need a little more under the emergency services authority of the city manager.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Item 23 is consider adoption, excuse me, item 22, consider approval of a resolution of the city council of the city of Clovis approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $30 million to finance and refinance a 75-unit permanent supportive rental housing facility for the benefit of UPH, Butterfly Gardens, LP, and certain other matters related thereto. Staff presenter is Andy. Andy?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, we'll be talking about the authorization of revenue bonds, municipal revenue bonds for a project called Butterfly Gardens. The request is for $30 million in bonds, and it's through the CNFA, the California Municipal Finance Authority. This is a joint powers authority with over 300 municipalities, of which we are one. The bonds will be used to finance and refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of Butterfly Gardens. So this is what's called the TEPER hearing, a Tax and Equity Physical Responsibility Act hearing. It's part of the federal IRS code, Internal Revenue Code. It requires approval by the city council to allow the obligation to qualify as a tax-exempt bond. The role of the council at this TEPER hearing is to certify the public benefit of the project for the purposes of facilitating the financing. The city does not incur debt or any liability with the approval of the issuance of the bonds. This is not a city financial obligation. There was notices required. Those were published in the paper as well as on our website and on our Facebook account. So details about the project. The project name is Butterfly Gardens. We have a map showing where it's at, but the address is 784 West Holland Avenue here in Clovis. The developer is UPH Butterfly Gardens, and they have a partner developer, South Health Enterprises, out of Icelia. The number of units is 75, one-bedroom. The density is 41.2 units per acre, and the project type is a permanent supportive housing for very low-income households. This is 50% or below AMI, and there's some income examples there. They could be experiencing homelessness or be persons with disabilities. The estimated project construction cost is $21 million. While the bond request is for $30 million, this is to provide a buffer in case costs increase, because this is a fairly long timeframe. The project has been awarded some financial grants from the state of California, $9 million for the No Place Like Home program, as well as the Fresno County Department of Behavioral Health, $3.5 million, and the Fresno Housing Authority has committed 73 project-based vouchers for ongoing revenue. Applications are being submitted or have been for tax-exempt bonds as well as the low-income housing tax credit, and those will be going in this fall. A little bit of timeline for you. They hope to close the financing of the project in the spring of '21 and start construction at the same time. Construction will be expected to be complete about a year later in May of 2022, and they hope to have full occupancy in summer of 2022. This is a little quick location of the project. It's at Willow and Holland. It's been a vacant lot for many years. Here's another shot for you of what it looks like today. This is a schematic of the layout of the project. It's three stories, 75 units with 40 parking stalls and a community room. And here is a rendering of the project as they've been submitting it for applications, for funding. So staff recommends adopting a resolution approving the issuance of the bonds by the CNFA for the benefit of the Butterfly Gardens project to provide for the financing of a permanent supportive rental housing facility in Clovis. And that concludes staff presentation. If you have any questions, please let me know, as well as representatives from the developer are here as well as on the phone with the bond counsel.
Thank you. Webb?
Well, I think I pushed the button too quickly. I'd like to hear more about the developer and the sort of skill set required to manage a project like this over time, because the secret of these are management as much as some of the upfront. So I just don't know anything about this developer, so I'd like to learn about that. I don't know if you'd want to comment, or the developer can come at the applicant when you come forward, but I'd like to know about that. you come forward, but I'd like to know about that.
So Up Development has developed quite a few of these projects, mostly in the Midwest, and they have several projects being developed in California. And they've partnered with a local developer, South Help Enterprises, which I think they could speak to their expertise, but we have worked with South Help Enterprises for a number of years, if not decades, here in Clovis, on affordable housing construction.
And the neighborhood outreach on this project, any so far?
I would let the developer talk about that.
Thanks.
Bob?
Yeah, I will disclose that I have met with the project applicants. And so, and with regards to the project itself, I think that's not what's before us, but to speak on it, I was very comfortable with the fact that it will be privately owned, that it will be very secure, and also for something for the southwest portion, for something new to come to that area. I think it would just be a boost to that part of the city. I had a couple of questions on the report itself, Andy. On page 117, it says, "With respect to the City of Clovis, it is expected that a portion of the issuance fee attributable to the city will be granted by them to us." Do you know how much that would be, if it was like $21 million, how much the issuance fee is, and how much we would get back?
I've heard about $13,000.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Good. Well, better than nothing. And then, just a nitpicky one, on page 116, on Fiscal Impact, it says, "The city will have no financial," I agree, "no legal," I agree, and then "no moral obligation." I kind of think we have some moral obligation in approving these things, and so I didn't understand why we would have none of those responsibilities, but maybe it's just only in regards to the bond itself. But I'm just thinking, if we think it was immoral, we may actually have some save, but you don't have to comment on it. I just wanted to... Okay, and the last one is, on the resolution itself, on page 119, on Section 3, it states there that we, the state, the authority, and any political subdivision, will have no indebtedness, no obligation. And I would like it to be stronger in that in the report, you actually say the applicant will be responsible. Is this sufficient, or should we put stronger language like that here, just so that it's very, very clear? I know that in the whereas section, we talked about UPH and what they're doing. It doesn't really talk about that obligation, but I was very comfortable with this because it does nothing to our credit rating. We aren't legally liable, but I wanted the resolution to, something in at least this Section 3, to really state that in there, so that way it's clear, so that we, you know, we're not on the hook at all.
Yeah, I defer to the bond council and the city council on those, as they drafted the resolution.
I don't know who's the...
I can speak to that. I mean, as far as the applicant's obligation, I mean, those are the legal obligations. I'm not sure that the resolution, putting something in that and making them...
It won't make any difference.
It's not going to make a difference. I mean, they're already required under whatever requirements they have. They're going to be the ones that's solely liable. So as far as the resolution, just making sure, crystal clear, the city has no liability. I think that's all we need to do. I would defer to bond council to speak to the applicant's legal obligations, but the city can't impose any additional legal obligations by this resolution that the applicant doesn't otherwise already have.
Yeah, I only ask because sometimes this is all people will look at. They're not going to look at our minutes. They're not going to look at a staff report. And in the end, if there ever is a dispute, I just wanted it to be clear, so that way, when we voted on it, we knew for sure, so.
Jose?
Yeah.
Jose?
Andy, this will be a new project for that area, but it's also multifamily dwelling, and that location is super saturated with that type of housing. So that people are now, what is it zoned for?
It has multiple zoning. It has an R1 zoning, and it also has the overlay district on it for our arena housing allocation. This project is compliant with our...
So arena, so, so we knew this going in before, and so it's a conscious decision by the city to actually put more of this type of housing in that area that's already very saturated with that kind of housing. It's a portion of town that has the higher crime rate. It's a portion of town that is not part of Clovis Unified School District. There's all kinds of issues that we've had there. You took all that into consideration as far as what we're doing today, and what it's going to mean to the future residents of that, of that housing.
So the discussion on issuing the financial bonds on this relative to land use, the land use decision was really made with the overlay being put in place a number of months ago, if not several years ago now. So the financing mechanism is really a step to allow a project to move forward.
So anyone who had the money could come in and do the same project?
That's correct.
Whether we get involved or not.
Correct.
But we do acknowledge, we do acknowledge that it's going to place an additional burden on our infrastructure, especially because of where it's located. It's a place that we, we need to do more to bring that portion of town up. Okay, but, you know, we're caught between a rock and a hard place, because we need that type of housing as a city, but we're also super saturated with that type of housing, that side of town, so.
We have, are also holding meetings between the developer and our Public Safety Chiefs about partnerships and allowing that project to be that asset for that area.
Because we need to bring more amenities to that portion of town. I know the mayor has advocated for new ways of finding green space for that side of town. It's an older part of Clovis, and we don't want to neglect it. And if we bring more housing like this, we don't want it to be forgotten, or at least I don't. Thank you.
Bob?
Thank you. Hotchkiss Terrace in Clovis, was that, I'm trying to figure out what UPH is. I don't know what that stands for. I don't know if that's just the names of some folks who, you know, decided to get together and work on this type of project. But I thought there was a Presbyterian connection with Hotchkiss Terrace, and I, and I thought that perhaps maybe UPH also was the same management group. Is that correct?
No, there's no relation. So Upholdings is UPH.
Just Upholdings, I...
Yeah, I don't believe they have any relation to what's now called the B Group, or Southern California Presbyterian Homes, that developed Hotchkiss Terrace.
Okay, all right. That was my only question. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
It's not a question. I wanted to also share, so that way my fellow council members can be, I know we're not talking about the project, but because that's been coming up, you know, in meeting with the developer and seeing and doing the research on what they have developed back east and everywhere, because it's privately owned, they value their property, they have security inside, they're helping those who have been in drug rehab to recuperate, with also counselors onsite, and the way they, they manage the facility, it is something that, and also, they've also provided, when I met with them, sort of the number of calls for service. It was very, very low. So that, and I know we have no say with regards to overlay and this sort of developments, but in speaking and in meeting with them, they take pride in their properties, and they're not going to turn it over. They're going to hold on to it because it is their investment, is their, sort of their, their business. And so that's something that I wanted to say gave me a lot of assurance, that it is something that will be different, but also benefit that part of the community, and also benefit those who are in the types of situations that really need this service. And so that's, just wanted to share that, to give assurances, at least in speaking with the actual applicant herself. She's a young, you know, very entrepreneurial young lady who just has a heart to help the people in need, so.
Thank you, Bob. Just a couple of questions. With this piece of land, it's sat fallow for, well, as long as I can recall. And we had, there was a source of calls for service for the police department for quite a while. If I recall, there's been three or four projects that have been projected at this location that have fallen through. Is that, is that correct over the years?
I'm aware of a couple, but some may have been before my time.
Okay. And, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of in a, this is a by right issue, so we don't have a lot of authority to say no. And this is just the financing part of it. I'm, I'll be also asking the developer about their, their history and things like that. I just, I'd hate to see this get built, and whoever owns it ends up going under, and all of a sudden, now it becomes an issue that we have to deal with. And I just, and granted, we don't have a legal or ethical obligation, but it'll fall to us to deal with the aftermath. So that's, that's really only my concern. Any other comments for, from council on this item? Okay, seeing that open to this public, any member of the public wish to address council on this item? Good evening, sir.
Tom Paulus Shaw, the President and CEO of South Help Enterprises.
Oh, did you hear what I first said? Okay. And we are one of the project partners. Upholdings was also mentioned, and they have been really the lead developer on this. I'll answer a few questions, and then I will also ask Ryan Wilson, who I know is on the, on the line, and he's with Upholdings, and he's the project manager. Kyle Lopez Schmidt is also here from Upholdings as well. And another person, Travis Cooper, from, from the Municipal Finance Authority is here for any technical questions about the bonds. But I'll just mention, South Help Enterprises, we're a nonprofit based in Visalia. We've been, been in business for 55 years, probably best known in the Clovis area for our mutual self-help housing program that we did in concert with the city and the redevelopment agency for a number of years, built close to 100 homes in, in town through that program. We also do rental housing development, and we have about 1,700 units of rental housing, including in recent years, development of some permanent supportive housing units, mostly in the city of Visalia, but we're incorporating them into a number of rental housing projects we have today. The reason that we partnered with Upholdings on this is that they bring deep experience in both development and management of, of permanent supportive housing, of this type of project. They're based in the Midwest, but they've made a significant move into California. The first project we're partnering with them on is in Porterville, a very similar project in, in scope and, and size. And we, we have come to believe that they're the right kind of partnership for us, and this is a way that we can expand our mission-based commitment to affordable housing development around, around our service territory throughout the San Joaquin Valley. But I would ask Ryan Wilson to talk about their experience and also answer the question about outreach, because they've been involved longer in this project than, than I. And, and then the bond issuer, I think, can possibly talk a bit to one of the questions about the bonds and what, who's responsible, and it's truly the borrower that's on the hook for those. And, but this is, this is a great project. We've appreciated the city's, the city's staff working through the various issues. This is something that you get into for 55 years, and really, I say in perpetuity, because that's what's necessary for these kinds of affordable housing projects. And we think this is about the best, most dynamic team you could put together for this kind of a project, so. Thank you. Any questions for Tom? Seeing that, did, was there, had someone on the line who wanted to talk to us, too?
We have Ryan.
Ryan, you're unmuted.
Excuse me, Ryan. I'm having some technical difficulties here. Is it, would it be possible for you to hang up and call us back, or maybe use a landline? Is that possible? Sure, I am on a...
Are you on speakerphone, or are you on the, on the device?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Don't mean to repeat myself too much, but Ryan Wilson, project manager with Upholdings, has been working on this project for about 10 years now. And I began to say, and sorry if this is redundant, but we're a Chicago-based rental housing company, but we are growing in California, specifically in the Central Valley area, to build and manage all types of affordable housing, family, senior, in projects like this, which is permanent supportive housing. We have lots of experience with development and management of this type of housing, have been very thorough and thoughtful about implementing national and industry best practices, around creating housing solutions for the most vulnerable communities through what we call service in rich housing. As Tom said, this project will have 5,000 square feet of community and office space onsite for mental, behavioral, and physical health practitioners, will be there to support residents in the execution of their customized service plan. We will be starting away in our model, and have had great success with this model everywhere. We're very excited to be partnering with South Help, as Tom said, with 55 years' experience of development of affordable housing in the Central Valley, very strong representation. And we look forward to continuing our work here at the Central Valley, as we come. Not sure if I have any other questions, but I'll send it over to any question in my list, or any questions that I've not yet, or written.
Ryan, we're getting about 70% of what you're saying. I don't want you to have to, you know, repeat everything you said. Can you, can you see if you can do something with your connection and then close? Is that possible?
I'm sorry, can I ask that again? You want me to reboot my connection?
Well, no, I'm just trying to, we, we're catching about 70% of what you're saying.
Okay.
I, we, I did, I did hear you're, you're talking about your history and the, and the plan for staff to, to help people onsite. And can you, can you speak to neighborhood outreach, or is that going to be someone else?
Sure, I can speak to that. Unfortunately, due to the virus, our traditional neighborhood outreach efforts were put on hiatus. We have done outreach to city council. They're working closely with Andy, and, and we've, we've spoken with Bob on councilman Bob on this. We are working at solutions to facilitate interaction and discussion with people about the project and spread the word in a virtual format, shifting from our preferred method of in-person discussion, open house conversations with people about the project. We've also, again, we're closely with South Help and through their network of, of partners and their work in the valley. But we, as we gear up towards our anticipated March 20... But we, as we gear up towards our anticipated March 2021 construction date, that is one of our big efforts is community engagement and bringing information to the community about this project.
So, I guess to, this is Baron Bessinger, by the way. Just, so because of COVID, you've been unable to do the neighborhood outreach that you normally would have done, but you've, but you've reached out to the city and the political elements to push the project. Would that be a fair statement?
That's correct. Another piece of information about this project, Upholdings was selected by the Fresno Department of Behavioral Health County Agency in their pursuit of bringing this type of housing to the county. So we've also been working very closely with Fresno DVH and county officials as well, in addition to city elected officials in Congress.
Great, thank you. Ryan, anything else?
No.
Any questions from council for Mr. Wilson? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Wilson, if you can hang on though, because we, you may be part of a follow-up question. Any other member of the public wish to address council on this item? Yes, sir.
My name's Kyle Lopez Schmidt, recently joined the Upholdings team as of April, right in the middle of the pandemic, so fun time to change a job. And wanted to kind of highlight my presence here as the company is really making a strong investment in the valley. Jessica Burzak, our company co-owner and principal, is from the valley and moved back here from Chicago in 2012, and has made a substantial commitment on building a pipeline of development projects here with the intention of also building a management company as those developments get built. So what we're talking about is the potential of not only a development team, but also a housing management company that would be growing jobs locally to care for these. Want to definitely highlight the permanent supportive housing as a tool not only for homelessness, but also for most vulnerable members of our community, like the disabled, that this facility will be a home for. Lynn and I served on the city and county 10-year plan to end homelessness 12 years ago, and obviously, we didn't quite end it yet. But I think that shows that we've got this long-term commitment to finding solutions to these problems in our community, and continuing to iterate, and continuing to put energy into finding the right solutions. And we want to be a good neighbor and a long-term kind of management of these communities for Clovis. And what you see in both our developments back east, as well as the data around permanent supportive housing, is that there is a reduction in calls for service versus homeless folks being on the streets or in shelters. You know, being in permanent housing is really a step up towards them getting their lives back on track. And this has the potential of being a really incredible contributor to the quality of that neighborhood of Clovis, and starts to really show the opportunities that we can have there. Thank you.
Any questions for Kyle?
Sorry, I have to walk all the way back. What about transportation access to that location? Because I think one of the challenges for Clovis over the years has been we don't have too many direct service providers to those, the population of folks that will live in the butterfly gardens. So what about transportation downtown?
Sure, sure. I'll leave the project-specific things to Ryan, because I just joined, he's been on this project for two years, and I'm on the Porterville project that Tom mentioned. One thing I knew, in these funding applications, to be competitive, you have to show links to transit, you have to show where people are going to shop, their grocery store, you have to show park access and health access. So often with permanent supportive housing, you'll see a paratransit service, so like working so that there's, you know, kind of universally accessible direct service to a site. But if Ryan wants to comment on that, he can.
Thanks.
Yeah. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll continue public comment. Does any other member of the public wish to address council on this item? Do we have me on the internet?
Yes, we have Travis Cooper.
Go ahead, Mr. Cooper.
Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Travis Cooper. I'm with the California Municipal Finance Authority. We're the issuer of the project. We're a joint powers authority throughout the state of California. And I just wanted to reiterate that essentially, these bonds are, this is a private loan between a bank and the borrower, so the city is under no obligation whatsoever for repayment of the bonds. So there was a question on if there was a foreclosure or anything like that. And just by way of information, over the past 15 years, there has only been one foreclosure of an affordable housing project in the state of California. And it was a fairly unique situation, but, and the reason for that is because there's a lot of subsidies and a lot of due diligence that's done on these projects when they're moved forward. But regardless, I just want to reiterate that this is a private loan between the borrower and their bank. So if there was a foreclosure, it would just, like any foreclosure, it would go back to the bank ownership, and the, and the bank would appoint a new nonprofit, and the project would still be taken care of. It would not fall upon the city to manage the project or anything like that. So this is essentially, the purpose of the TEPRA hearing is, one, to provide a public hearing for the public to comment on the issuance of the bonds, and, two, for the approval of the resolution to approve CMFA as the issuer of the bonds. So that's kind of the reason for the TEPRA hearing itself. So just wanted to say that, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Anybody have any questions? Any member of the council have any questions for Mr. Cooper? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Any other member of the public present wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have any additional on the, on the internet?
Yes, Ryan Wilson, like, he would like to make one more comment.
Sure. Mr. Wilson.
Hi. Hi. Something I failed to mention in my first introduction that came up previously was concern about emergency services. This also relates to our community outreach. We have been in touch with some of the police and fire department officials in Clovis who are interested in learning more from police and fire, emergency officials in other places where we have, like housing. And that has already been pursued immediately as well. So we understand those concerns, and we want to go out of our way to show how this has taken place in other communities. So that is something that's been facilitated, and we're hoping will take plenty of [inaudible]. And just finally, I would like to say that any questions or comments about the project that are not appropriate for a bond issuance hearing that you'd like to have with us directly, we're very interested in speaking with you about those. I would like to make myself available to have those time efficient outside of this meeting. And I can work with Andy and his team to set up these channels of communication for everything. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other comments on the internet?
None.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do we have any written comments on this item?
None.
Okay, I will close public comment and come back to council for discussion or for action. Lynn?
I just want to follow up on what Joe said. I think this is a, it's important, and it's needed, and all of that, and I think it'll be a challenge for staff on the First Arena overlay project. I'm betting there's not a lot of neighbors who live near there that are going to say housing for the homeless is good for their neighborhood. So I think we've got to be really careful. You all could manage the best outreach so that people do feel included, they do feel like it's going to add value. We might need to look at the green space in the neighborhood, because there really isn't any, and now we're going to put a, I can't remember how many units, but whatever, it doesn't matter. But, so I just think we have to be really careful that we're, we do maybe more outreach than even normal. I just, many rentals are in there, so you have a lot of non-owner occupied houses. So it's just, it could be really a negative experience, or it could be really an awesome experience. We've had great experiences with self-help over the years. That's hard to say with a mask, self-help. So I, every confidence that we've got the right partners, but I just think we have a chance to do it the very best we can in terms of engaging the neighborhood. And it will be a challenge, but I know you're up to it. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's really important as we go forward, because this is not going to make a whole bunch of people really happy, I can assure you. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other member of the council? I was looking at Vaughn, expecting him to turn his light on. Vaughn?
No, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution in the city council to approve the issuance of revenue bonds.
Can I, I just want to make a comment before we, before we get a second.
I, I have, I have the same concerns with the neighborhood and the outreach that needs to be done. Having been in law enforcement and dealt with this vulnerable population, if we can make a headway to get people between the bridge of the street, to sobriety, to the rest of their life, this is a huge deal. Obviously, we're kind of shoehorning this onto a piece of land, which is going to make it problematic. I would love to see the Porterville project. I would get in the car and go look at that. So if that's something that, that you guys could work out for me, I'll reach out to my, my friend who's the mayor in Porterville also. It's, this could be problematic. I just want to make it successful. So I think communication is the key here.
Any other member of the council wish to speak to this item? We have a, we have a motion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed? None opposed. Item passes unanimously. Item 23, consider adoption of an ordinance 20-11 approving a rezone of approximately four acres of property located at the southwest corner of Temperance and Knees avenues to be consistent with the underlying general plan designation of MUBC, mixed-use business campus. This request is to rezone the subject property from the RA, single-family residential very low-density zone district to C-P, professional office zone district, and amending the, amending the added condition from the May 18th, 2020 introduction for staff and the property owners to explore opportunities using the Federal Irrigation District Canal Bank as a trail pathway on the west side of the property. Property dedication may be required towards trail pathway width and landscaping. If property dedication is required, the maximum amount of dedication the city may require from the property owner for the trail pathway is five feet. Beal Properties Incorporated, property owner. We, this item came before this council previously. There was a three to two vote with council members Ashbeck and Monatua voting no. Lilly Chau is the presenter. Lilly?
Dave. Oh, Dave, I'm sorry. Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to handle this again for Lilly. Andy, do you want to announce this slide for me? As you noted, this is a request to approve the rezoning of the subject property from the RA zone to the CP zone. This, as you've noted, is, has been before you a couple of times. The specifics of this resoning application are that the general plan calls for mixed-use business campus to be developed on the site since at least 2014, and so the proposed CP zone would simply implement the general plan designation for the site. Next slide. As Mr. Mayor just referenced, June 15th, council introduced this ordinance with an added condition addressing trail development along the canal frontage of the property, including a maximum dedication of five feet from the property. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the second reading and adopt the ordinance as it was introduced by your council on June 15th. That concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address the council on this item? Anyone present in council chambers? Seeing none, do we have anybody on the internet?
There are none.
We did have a comment in a written document. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we have a written comment from David Angel. He has asked it to be read into the record. Due to the COVID-19 problems, I was unable to attend the meeting in person or online that dealt with this issue, ordinance 20-11. As has been the situation in the past, with past applications for changing the use of this land, the current traffic pattern and the number of cars and pedestrians who frequent this intersection, given the purpose change to a business use, does not produce a safe intersection, given the proposed uses of this corner in the past. When residents presented our concerns, residents from all four sides of this property, to the proposed builder on that corner, discussed within the purpose traffic patterns during the AM school traffic, afternoon school traffic, and during the night, given the already constructed residential use of that intersection. The applicant did not purchase the land to build a assisted living structure because of this. Any other business structure is just going to interfere in the same manner. This property change of use should not be granted, as you've always granted with your acceptance, and construction of the homes on the southeast portion of this area, the north and east of the canal line is the boundary for construction of homes. You've kept the use of homes north and east of the canal and business south of the canal. It only makes sense to do the same to the west, sorry, do the same on the west side of the Temperance. If not, why has the canal been used and approved for such a boundary in the past for construction of homes and businesses? My voice as a citizen who has lived in the area for over 12 years, is to not change the use of business and allow that wedge to be developed into single-family homes as has been the designation in the past. David C. Angel, 1356 North Magnolia, Clovis.
Thank you, Andy. And that was the only written comment we had on this item?
Yes.
Okay, I will close public comments and come back to council for discussion or for action.
Mayor, I had a question for David. Related to Mr. Angel's comments, I just think it's important to point out for the record what, at least what I understand to be true. And that is, the designation is for mixed-use business campus. This is not going to be anything other than what has already been designated under the general plan. Is that right?
That's exactly correct.
So his comments related to the construction of homes would require a general plan amendment if we wanted to go in the direction that he would like us to, as I understood his letter. Is that correct?
That is also correct.
Okay. Those are the only questions I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I'll go ahead and make a motion then. I move that we approve ordinance 20-11, the rezone of approximately four acres of the property that's been designated in the agenda.
Now, a second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Motion passes three to two, with council members Ashbeck and Monatua dissenting. Item 23, excuse me, item 24, consider approval of change of city council meeting. Luke Serpa, Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we are looking at our scheduled items coming before council over the next few weeks, and we are recommending cancellation of next Monday's meeting. We would still have the meeting on the 20th of July, but there just isn't that much stuff coming through, so it would be prudent to cancel next week's meeting. That's, that's my presentation. I'm open for any questions.
Any questions for Luke from council? Seeing none, I will open this to the public. Any member of the public wish to address council on this item? Anyone in chambers? Seeing none, any member, any citizen on the internet?
None.
And we had no public comments on this item?
Correct.
I will close public comment and come back to council for action.
I'll move that we approve the adjustment to our council schedule for July.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 25, for the city, Clovis City Council conducted workshop to discuss the impact on ongoing city operations during the COVID-19 state of emergency, as declared by the federal government, state of California, county of Fresno, and city of Clovis, and to explore actions the city may take in response to the crisis. A is consider approval, authorize the city manager the city manager to execute the certification form for receipt of CARES Act funds from the state of California and all related documents. Andy is our presenter. Or is it Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off at least and kind of talk a little bit about what's going on with the pandemic. As councils aware, last Thursday, the governor issued some follow-up direction and guidance requiring closure of businesses that had previously been allowed to open. Statewide, what we're seeing is the seven-day or 14-day rate of deaths continues to go down slightly, stabilized or down, but hospitalizations have skyrocketed. The in the governor's press conference today, hospitalizations have gone up 50% in the last 14 days. And we're, if you recall, at the beginning of the shutdown in California in March, the concern was overwhelming the healthcare system. And with this rapid rise with the reopening, those concerns have resurfaced, and that's what's leading, I think, to the closure of certain businesses, such as in-house dining and some other businesses. So while the deaths are down, the infection rate, the the number of infections and the infection rate, which is critical because the number of infections will go up with additional testing, but the infection rate, the percentage of those people that are being tested, that are showing up positive, is also jumped way up in the last 14 days. So statewide, we're, I don't think we're in a second wave as much as we're just in a resurgence of the first wave with the reopenings. So that's been going on. Clovis, we continue to work with the county to get data from the county. The first graph that they provide us now, keep in mind that they provided this data as of June 30. So the week, the last week of each graph really isn't a complete week's data yet. They it's just they give it to us on Tuesdays, and it runs through the following Saturday. So we'll get another graph tomorrow. But you can see that the last two weeks, there was a significant increase in the number of cases with Clovis address. That corresponds with what we're seeing statewide. This is a cumulative graph showing how many people have been hospitalized from Clovis, again cumulative with diagnosed with COVID, and then cumulative number of hospitalizations. We're seeing our hospitalization rate fairly stable, which is which is good news. Now, again, this is not really reflective of so much of what we're doing as to just the behavior of the public. We happen to have, and it's largely a factor of the socioeconomic demographics of the city. We have a lot of people in Clovis that work in jobs that allow them to either work from home or to socially distance. You know, some of the problem workplaces, and I don't want to say problem, some of the large outbreaks in workplaces have been from things like food processing plants and such. We don't have a lot of those employees living in Clovis. So this is just, again, we don't live in a bubble. These are just numbers reporting the Clovis numbers. Okay, next slide. Again, this this graph shows the number of infections by the different cities in the county. Clovis is the kind of the medium yellow one over there on the right, which is about midpoint up there. So on a per capita basis, we're doing well because the cities, we are larger than all of the other cities shown here because Fresno is not included in this graph. So again, because of where our people work and how they're able to social distance and carry on their business, we're doing fairly well. But we don't live in a bubble. This is another slide from the county's dashboard showing the number of cases for communities. And as you can see, this one does include Fresno, and Fresno has, as they would be expected, being such a large city, they have a very large proportion of the cases in the county. Okay, next slide. So that's kind of an update where we're at as far as the COVID outbreak in Clovis. Just to touch bases on a couple of things that the city has been doing, Andy and Sean and their staff and Carrie as well have been doing a great job with our restaurants with this kind of back and forth where you're closed, you're open, you're closed. They've done a number of projects. One is the Meals on Wheels program where we are providing lunches, and we're purchasing those lunches from restaurants in town as a way to keep them going during this time. This started when when the restaurants were closed. We average probably 150 a day lunches that, you know, it varies. Some days, it's a lot less, some is a lot more, but 150 lunches a day. And we've used a total of 36 different restaurants so far, and we're continuing that program. And then with the governor's order last Thursday to close indoor dining, we are working a lot with the restaurants on expanding their outdoor footprint, either creating or expanding outdoor footprints so that the businesses can stay in business and do a feasible and profitable amount of business on outdoor dining. So we've got 14 Old Town restaurants that have no fee sidewalk dining permits that they already had been issued or have been recently. We've got three Old Town restaurants that are using other public space for additional dining areas. We've got four non-Old Town restaurants are working with staff to provide additional dining space on private property. This is if they're not using street property, they're going to use the parking lot on, you know, whatever business they business campus they're on. And they're working with staff because if they're going to bring in a tent, there's some, you know, things we need to do to help them set up the tent. We're helping to work with, you know, just guide them along the whole process. So we're doing everything we can. It is still a huge challenge for our local restaurants and local businesses. But it is the state's orders, and, you know, we'll get through this together somehow. So that kind of concludes the status report of where we're at. One of the things we have on the workshop tonight is to authorize me to sign the certification form for some CARES Act funding. This CARES Act came or funding came to the state, and it is being, some of that money is being given to the cities by the state or provided to the cities by the state. And it's on a population formula. It looks like it would probably be about $1.47 million that Clovis would be eligible for. Now, the the state legislation and the CARES Act, there are certain things that that can be used for. It's not just here's money. It's a it has to be COVID-related expenses, either staffing. A lot of the staff time that we've invested in this would be recoverable through this. The project we talked about earlier about putting disinfection systems in the HVAC, that would be a cost that would be appropriate for this. And we would maximize, obviously, what we could be reimbursed for. We would, we're still kind of studying all the criteria, but it could be up to 1.47 million dollars for the city, which is money that we're spending, and this would be a chance to get some of it back. So we need to sign this certification form. Part of the certification form, a copy of which was in the package, indicates that we will comply with all state orders that have been issued, which we have been. The one kind of concerning or possibly concerning issue is that future orders we must comply with. And and failure to comply with any future state order could put this could mean we'd have to refund this money. The way I look at it is, so far, we have been complying with all state orders. If at some point in the future, and I don't expect this, but if the state came up with an order that we just could not abide by, we would have to return this money, which means we'd be back to where we are if we didn't take it at all. I think it's a small risk that the state's going to come up with something that we can't abide by. So my recommendation would be that we sign this form and take this. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Luke. Any questions for staff?
I have a question, Luke. In the very beginning, when the council voted to open the public, the meetings to the public, was that in violation of a state order, or was that an interpretation that the majority of the council took and was not in conflict?
It was not in violation. At that time, the state allowed us the option to close the meetings but didn't require it. So opening them up was fully within the orders, compliance of the order.
But against a shelter-in-place, that you should do everything you can to stay home. I guess it's a fine line, maybe, or no?
All of our interpretations in other cities have been that it, and there's been other cities that did open them up, is that it was legal to open them, that the state never ordered them closed. They just provided that if that was the desire.
Okay, thanks.
What's that? Luke, governments, is that an essential function or essential work that everybody has agreed upon?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Government, government.
Uh, yes.
Yes. And part of being, doing governance is is receiving input from your constituency. Would you not agree?
I would agree.
And to have a few of them, just 16 or less, because we've never had a full complement of our 16 citizens of Clovis that are allowed to come here and can come here, I look at the at the audience, and the great majority of the, what, five or six people that are in the in the seats are are staff. So have we ever been overwhelmed by those that want to come to the council and person-to-person want to address us?
I'm not sure what you mean by overwhelmed. There was one meeting where we did have to limit people, and they could not come in and they had to sit here.
But here in the chambers, because that happened.
In the chambers.
Which one was that?
It may have been the first one we had that was open. We had people sitting out in the breezeway. We brought a lot of chairs out there. So there's been one throughout this. Even when when we opened the meetings, we did make sure that we continued to offer a way to participate for the public without being here in person. And we've actually expanded that some some ways through the through the WebEx and the camera system. So we're continuing to offer a variety of ways. But the in-person is one way that is is legal and in compliance with the government.
But even that one time that you mentioned, were we overwhelmed, or were the people, were the citizens wanting to meet with their council person-to-person? Were they civil and waited their turn as and when seats opened up in the chamber, did they, were they agreeable to that?
Yes, Andy.
Did we have any civil unrest because of that?
No.
Did police need to come here and restore order?
No.
So our citizens have been cooperative, and we've largely been very similar to what we see today, very few people.
Right.
But we have given them that opportunity, that at least 16 can come and address their council person-to-person.
Correct.
Thank you.
Fox?
Thank you for that report, Luke. With regards to the 1.4 million, do we know how much we have lost? Is it comparable? Is that not even enough to sort of recruit? Do we have those two?
Well, our initial estimate in lost revenue was $10 million for this year, or for the last quarter of the previous fiscal year and this current fiscal year. So 1.47 million is not going to offset that loss. And 1.47 is the maximum that we could get. We are still kind of adding up what we could get, what we would qualify, what expenses we have had that could be reimbursed by this. But the one point, even if we even if we take full advantage and get the 1.47 million, it still leaves us eight and a half million short revenue-wise.
And that 10 was something in which we were anticipating, and we would have to...I'm just saying, that 10 is probably not all COVID-related that we could reimburse for? Is that all accurate?
Well, that's, okay, so the 10 is a lost revenue, not necessarily an expense. You know, we were losing $10 million in revenue without even considering the extra expenses associated with this pandemic. This 1.47 will help offset the expenses, which will alleviate some of the burden, because we were going to have to pay for those expenses out of our general fund, mostly out of the general fund. So it would alleviate the deficit in the general fund, but it's 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 not going to fully offset the loss.
Okay. And this is part of the the second wave of the CARES funding, or is all part of that first one?
I believe it was the first CARES Act. Let me turn over to Andy, because he may know better about that.
This was the first allocation of CARES funds to the states that they received, that they allocated to the state budget process just a few weeks ago.
And my second question is, you mentioned that if there's any violation, you return. Is it an all or nothing? Or if we have expensed some of it, let's say we use a million already, and there's still 400,000 we qualify for, and then we violate an order, do the 1 million that we have already expensed for and maybe gotten reimbursed for, does that kind of go, okay, it's already used? Or do we have to reimburse all of it? Is that clear?
Yeah. So my interpretation is that if we say we're not going to comply with a state order, we would have to, we would not be eligible for any of this money. So any that we had already spent, we would have to reimburse.
Okay. So your interpretation is whatever expense, we would have to return to all, in other words?
Yes.
Okay. And let me see. Thank you for the numbers on the outdoor and dining and Andy for your work in helping a lot of the restaurants. I just felt that the last weekend was very difficult, as I spoke with a lot of restaurant owners, because they were, they worked hard to get in compliance. They built everything internally, procedures, in hopes of that weekend, meaning this last weekend, to really, you know, they probably got the inventory, everything ready. And now, three weeks, they're going to lose all that, you know. So I just feel the hurt that they had with regards to what they could have provided. And so I hope we continue to work for even those that are, haven't reached out to us, just to let them know that, you know, you have a big lot here. You can you can do something in compliance with the state order. So that way, you can generate some type of sit-down revenue. And so, and I spoke with even those, you know, the owner of all the KFCs and the Wendy's in town. I mean, he had to let go 30% of his staff. And because it's only drive-thru, you can only serve so many in that drive-through, even if everybody comes, order is still a limited number. And so they were struggling pretty significantly. So even though we think that it may, some may be open, and they were benefiting a lot, we're still struggling. So, thank you.
Senator Ruel?
Thank you, Mayor. So on the numbers, I know that we've had one loss of life, which was, you know, obviously a tragedy for the citizens of the city of Clovis, and particularly for that family. Has there been any additional loss of life since your last report?
Not that's been reported by the county. And that was a few weeks ago that we had the one, and they have not reported any additional.
Okay. And then, if you could go back a couple of slides, whoever's controlling the slide. Keep going, keep going. Okay, yeah, one more. So June 27 to July 4, if I understood it correctly, there was a new report of 19 cases for the week that ended July 4. Do I have that right?
Yes, but if you look at the top, this was reported to us on June 30. So they made this report, and that week had not ended. So tomorrow, I will get another report, and it may, I expect it will show more than 19 for the week that ended July 4.
So that bar that we see on that graph is not a complete week as we know it?
Correct.
And then if you can go to the next graph, please. So, but what I see here on June 27 to July 4, is no cumulative addition for that week ending July 4. So that was puzzling me a little bit. Can you help me to understand?
Yeah. So another note, I asked the same question, and you can see another note up there, that there's 51 positive cases that don't have a hospitalization. They're still trying to determine. So if you look, the total number here, and it's, this is the county's graph that they give us, it was a bit confusing to me. There's 51 that they don't know whether they were hospitalized or not. So they do not show up either blue or red. They're left off this graph until their case is determined. So.
Whether they were hospitalized, because they could be the early stages, and they don't know if there's.
Correct.
It's not the same, it only partially.
Correct, correct. So I would fully expect the data I get tomorrow. So in reality, and I don't want to disparage the county epidemiologist that's working with us, because he's doing a great job, but you could really almost ignore that last bar, because it's not a complete. bar, because it's not a complete, and tomorrow I'll get a complete for this last week, and then I'll be able to report that the next time.
Well, I, I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate your work, Andy's work, all of the staff's work, even just here in the council chambers in trying to make the best of what is a really difficult situation. There are a lot of views on, you know, how governance should take place during this period of time, and it has to be very complex for anybody that has five bosses. And so, the, they probably have five different, you know, views, at least places on the continuum as to what would be the appropriate response. And the way that you and your staff have reached out to our business owners has been spectacular. Everybody that I've spoken to appreciates our efforts to try to make it easy. They express frustration, obviously, about the circumstances that they're in, and, you know, they'll, they allocate blame broadly, but they always are appreciative of the city of Clovis. So, incredibly complex environment that you found yourself in as a city manager and for all of the staff, and that we have gotten ourselves to a point now where we can perhaps maybe get some reimbursement for some of those expenses is, is encouraging. You know, I, I think that probably some of us, or maybe all of us in the back of our mind, are a little concerned that, you know, you take this bait, you take the money, then the governor, unlike last time, may use that as a incentive to try to get compliance with orders that he otherwise might not have been able to get compliance from, from the cities or the counties, and so, because a lot of cities and counties were not particularly interested in complying with some of his previous orders. So, I'm, I'm curious to see how that all develops, the politics of it frankly. The, are we intending on, should we, when we receive this money, and are we intending on just kind of keeping that in an escrow type of account until we know that we've made this through and he's not kind of causing us to do something that we wouldn't think would be counterproductive to our citizens or to our businesses, or we're gonna, when we receive it, we're going to just go ahead and spend it and then just plan on reimbursing it from some other source, or are we already spending it, and then as soon as it comes in, it's, it's already been called for?
So, realistically, this, this money's already been spent, or is being spent, and with the budget that we presented to council, we proposed taking two million dollars out of the emergency reserves to cover our expenses. If some of those expenses are now paid to this, that would be that much less money that comes out of the reserve. So, we would spend this money, if something happened down the road and we had to reimburse this money, then we would dip back into the emergency reserves for the full amount that we had projected.
I see, and none, none of this money is supposed to be used as replacement revenue for, you know, our, our loss of property or sales tax or TEO?
No, it's, it's not a replacement revenue, it is for COVID-related expenses, a reimbursement for COVID-related expenses. But it's a pretty broad spectrum of what COVID-related expenses are, so-
Yeah, I noticed that. Okay, that's good. All right. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
A couple of things. I had a conversation with our folks from the, from Lunas today, and they were concerned about how they're going to adapt to outside dining on Pulaski, and I, I referred them to, to staff, and I, I really think that our staff is doing an excellent job in outreach and trying to tell people how they can adapt, at least temporarily, to this changing environment that they get hit with. We got a, a couple of public comments, and, and I know I've gotten quite a few emails, and I'm sure everybody else has gotten emails. When someone calls and asks questions about the mask requirement, who, who do they get?
Uh, sometimes it's just the receptionist, sometimes they, they call PD, PD will roll the call typically to Andy's office. Andy and his staff have been doing really the bulk of the question answering, both on the inquiries on, you know, do I have to wear a mask, can I open, but especially on the business side. If, if, if I had to pay Andy and his staff by the hour, if they weren't salaried, they would have burnt up this whole one and a half million dollars. They've been putting twenty-four seven, I think. So, it's the number of people that will answer the questions, probably Andy answers most of them, but a lot of them go just to the main line, which would be Jackie or Diana, and they will give them to Andy or John or myself as necessary.
And, and I assume that what, obviously with upper-level management, we would expect everybody to be on the same page. I'm assuming if it goes to, let's say it's a police dispatcher, we have a script that they work from so that we're being consistent with the direction that we give?
Yes, Chad McCallum puts together a statement that then we disperse to everybody just because anybody that's going to be getting calls, we do want to make sure we're on the same page, we want to make sure that no one says, I don't know what the rules are. So, we, we disperse that out so that, that all departments and all of the front counter staff have the same answers, and that's generally what's given out.
When, when someone says, I have a medical condition which precludes me from wearing a mask, what are we generally telling them? I, is it, I, it's one of those-
If they have a, the, the order did say that if someone has a medical condition, they, they are exempt from the need to wear a mask, and under two years old, they don't have to wear a mask. Coming into the city offices, we're not, we don't have any mask police, we're not, you know, we're not enforcing, we're not out enforcing this. If someone calls and asks us and says, hey, I, I have a medical condition, I can't wear a mask, it's like, okay, then just make sure you explain that. If, you know, if the business you walk into says, hey, you need a mask, you need to explain that, so.
Because I've, I've had that conversation with some folks, and I, I would assume that, I'm going to tell you what I told them. They, if they, yes, I have a medical condition, but I want to go into XYZ store, and the store says, our policy is you have to wear a mask, they can't just force their way in. I mean, this is private property, they're, they, the, the owner or the management has the right to refuse the service based on that situation regardless of their medical condition, but I could see this being a hip disaster too, and someone saying, you're discriminating against me because of my medical condition. I, and I'm getting in the weeds on it. It's just, if you could send, I would like a copy of what we're, what we're sending or saying to people just so that when I respond to something that I'm being consistent with what the message that, that staff is putting out. And, and I've had people, you know, this isn't a, this isn't a law, it's a man, it's not a mandate, it's a suggestion, and it's, the governor's order has the force of law, unless I'm understanding this incorrectly. We are choosing not to be the enforcement agency of that, but we do reserve the right in egregious situations. So, we're, this is a, I, and when we get into public comments, there were, we have public comments, both pros and cons on this, so it's not, that's something we just need to be consistent with. Any other questions for Luke?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could say something, and that, and that's true, we do, we do tell people that, but the, the governor's order, and sometimes the orders coming out of Sacramento are orders, sometimes they're a recommendation for the county to issue an order. Once again, Andy has become the great interpreter for the entire Central Valley, I believe, because we have people calling us from all over as to what this really means. But the, when the governor issues the order for the masks, that's the floor. Anybody can set a higher limit than that on their private property. So, a business owner has full rights to say, I'm not serving you whether you have a, a medical issue that precludes you from wearing a mask or not. I, if that's going to spawn an ADA lawsuit, that's between that person and the business, but the businesses do have that right, but I'm not aware of, well, some of the corporate ones have done that. They've, they've adopted more stringent requirements in the state. Most of the locals, I think, are pretty reasonable people.
Thank you. Andy, Lynn, did you have something?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, obviously, this has been a really hard time. I've disagreed with literally every decision made up here, but that's okay. We're a team here. But I would say this, the county has lacked, the federal and state and local governments broadly have lacked leadership. There is no consistent message. So, I would like to invite my colleagues, this is a test. Could we take a photo for social media with all of us with our masks on? Would you put your mask on, Bob? And encourage people to wear a mask. It is so simple if people would just wear a mask. The graph before this one, if you go back one, what the hospital looks at every day, one more, so with the, all the squiggly lines, oh, sorry, going the wrong way, with all the, that one, there's not a trend line on there going down. That's what scares hospitals to death. So, I guess I would like to invite my colleagues, if we could offer leadership, there is not an elected body in this county or state that has agreed on anything, including us, but if we could today agree on simply committing to our, to our citizens to wear a mask, I think it could go a long way. You got your camera? What do you think about that? Yeah? So, I'd like to invite if you, we could do that, but I just think people are looking for help. We have letters in here from the hospital, it's just, it's so simple, and we are here, there, because we didn't wear a mask on May sixth. It's not, it's not hard. So, I just, I implore my colleagues, if we could take that, a photo would be awesome. Anybody want to take a picture?
I will.
Let's go. It's not to be all or nothing.
Can, can we get to, can we get to close, before, before close session?
Okay.
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 Um, any-
Get your camera ready.
Any other person, we're going to have to socially distance, so we'll have to put a wide, put the wide lens on.
I do not want the market photo, people saying next to you, they're going, hi, we're here. No, that is not the point. Six feet, mask.
Any, any other questions for staff?
Luke, can, for Friday's, your, the report that we get, can you put these on there? Because we won't have a meeting next week, and I-
Sure, I could start doing that. That way it would be the complete week for the previous week. I can start adding this in.
Thank you.
If there's, Lynn, do your lights on, do you have anything else? If there's no other questions for staff, I open this to the public, any member of the public wish to address the council on this item. Seeing none in chambers, do we have anybody on the internet?
Yes, we have David Raul.
Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor Besseger, council members. I'm talking, I'm assuming you can hear me. Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. Your, your comments, I think, are right on the money. I, I especially want to applaud Councilmember Ashbeck. This is such a fraught issue, and it needs leadership. Councilmember Whaler asked a moment ago, what is governance? How do we govern? What is it? It's leadership, it's leading, and this issue is so divisive and so fraught, and there is no leadership. I had occasion the last week to go into a couple of restaurants in Old Town Clovis to pick up my food, which I was taking home to eat, and found customers dining inside, two or three people in a small closed room, eating dinner. And when I said to the boss, I thought, I saw an order, the government, the governor said, you're closed, and he said, I'll close the doors when somebody from the city tells me I have to close the doors. I think this is a terrible situation, and I just want to encourage the council to take leadership on this, because without leadership, there will be a terrible disaster of one sort or another. Either we all get sick and die, or we all take to the streets with rifles and shoot each other because the mask wearers don't like the non-mask wearers. We need leadership on this, and I would just encourage you to take that role. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Do we have anybody else on the internet?
No.
Mr. Clerk, could you, I, I don't know if these, these written comments were asked to be read into the record or not, did they?
They have not. There are four comments that have been provided to you on the dice.
The last one? Take a look.
From Harvey Clement, I would like this written comment read into the record. I didn't see it on the others.
Yes, you're right. I, I'll go ahead and, and read it, I got it in front of me. This is from a Harvey S. Clement. His comment is, as a retired member of the U.S. Air Force who supported the Constitution of the United States for over thirty-two years, I find the lack of leadership vis-à-vis the wearing of masks in public in Clovis alarming. The wearing of masks is clearly helpful when fighting the coronavirus, but the Clovis City Council has refused to provide the leadership expected of them. This lack of leadership is analogous to playing Russian roulette with the Clovis citizenry and Clovis, and city visitors. This lack of leadership is on such a straightforward task as killing people, and some of them are babies and children. It is hard to imagine Clovis leadership ignoring this fact. As a member of the military sworn to supporting and defending the Constitution of the United States, I am appalled at the obstinate opposition to wearing masks. While in the military, I often had to wear a helmet, gas mask, oscur mask, chemical warfare suit, and other protective gear, and a uniform in support of the Constitution. It is reasonable to ensure our citizens protect themselves and others by simply wearing a mask. Let us pay attention to the science and known facts, and during this crisis, make the wearing of masks mandatory. I have recently heard Clovis referred to as a common sense city. As Mark Twain said, common sense is very uncommon. It would appear the vast majority of the city council does not have any when it comes to this health crisis. And that's the end of it. Mr. Clement, thank you for your comment. There are no other items to be read into the record?
Correct.
Okay, I will close public comment on this item.
Just can I just, I think it's important to note the letters from the hospital.
Oh, okay, I missed, missed that.
So, the Community Medical Center shared the message that Craig Castro sent to all of their staff, and the link to an op-ed that was in the paper on Sunday between the CEOs of Valley Children's and Community, or, yeah, Community. So, I just think in deference to our hospital, who's asking us all to step up and follow just these basic rules, I want to thank them for sending in this letter to them.
Actually, that letter was very informative. I, I was, I was impressed with the, with the, the level of information they gave, and it got my attention. So, we are, we're done with the workshop unless somebody has any other questions?
Actually, if I may, Mayor, I'm going to move that we authorize the city manager to execute the certification form for receipt of CARES Act funds from the state of California and all of these documents.
One second. We have a motion and a second, thank you, Bob. Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will go, we'll go to city manager comments, council comments, and then we'll, before close section, we'll take our, our picture with our smiling masks on. City manager comments?
I've got nothing specific.
Council comments. Mr. Whaler? Lynn?
Bob?
Wanted to report that July seventeenth, Andy and I participated in the Housing Community Economic Development meeting because we didn't finish approving a couple of the acts, and so, Andy, both of them were approved, right? I, I don't have my notes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, one is SB eleven-twenty, which is sort of subdivisions. It's, it's the duplex rule. It states, measure would require local government to ministerially approve a housing development containing two residential units, meaning duplex, in a single-family zone. So, that's going to be a ministerial process. And additionally, this measure would require local governments to ministerially approve urban lot splits. Okay, so, we voted no, but it won. The second is SB thirteen-eighty-five from Caballero, Streamlining Housing and Commercial Zones, you know, just read the quick summary of that one as well, and you can kind of look it up. This measure would create the Neighborhood Homes Act, which establishes a housing development project as an authorized use on a neighborhood lot, defined as a lot zone for office or retail commercial use under a local agency's zoning code or general plan. Just wanted to report that. Also wanted to thank Andy and, and the staff for arranging the tour of CHSU, the med school. So, it was, it was really, it was very impressive to, to see the level and the quality of the building itself, and so I think, I think it's something we will be very proud of when it gets full and everything gets back to normal, so.
Jose?
I want to talk a little bit about leadership, and I think the mask wearing, facial covering wearing is very important. I actually put it on my social media accounts way before anybody was even talking about that, because if you are vulnerable to this virus, it's very important that you stay- Because if you are vulnerable to this virus, it's very important that you stay home. Do not expose yourself to this virus, especially if you're a person that has passed their middle age. What I do, I go to the county's website, Fresno County COVID-19 Date and Surveillance Dashboard, and read the facts, not the babies are dying and hyperbole that people will tell us. It's not happening in Fresno County. There's no babies dying in Fresno County, yet. Yet. It could happen, obviously. It has happened in some jurisdictions, but it hasn't happened here. Most of the people dying, a large percentage actually, seems like it's in the 80 percentile or over the age of 45. And so those are the people dying. And why do they die? Because they have comorbidities. What are those? High blood pressure, unmanaged chronic diseases like diabetes and other immune deficiencies. So they're not just dying because they're old, they're dying because of other risk factors that they've had all their lives. So if you're one of those people, do not go out. If you go out, if you must go out, make sure you're protected. You stay six feet away from people and you wear a mask and make sure that everybody that comes to visit you is wearing a mask. And there's ways to survive it. I tell people, the things we have to watch is not just how many positives there are. They've tested 72,206 people in Fresno County. 65, 6,599 have tested positive. That's only 9.1% of those tested. So it's, yes, it's significant, but it's not the end of the earth or the world. So we also have to show that leadership, that it's not the end of the world. People have died in Fresno County, according to what's on that dashboard. I'm not making this up, I'm online. And Fresno County says that 78 of our fellow citizens in Fresno County have died from this disease. 78. There are people mourning these people, and I feel for them, I feel for their loss. But that's from 6,599 cases. That's 1.2% of those with the disease. In other words, that's 99% of the people, almost, right? Survive it. But 1.2% don't. So we also have to show leadership on the other side, that we can't just roll up in a fetal position and do nothing, especially the young, especially those that are healthy. But we must warn the young. Young people, be careful because we also know about this virus. You may have it and not know it. And therefore, if you go to visit granny, if you go to visit the great uncle, and they're over the age of 60, and they have other pre-existing conditions, you may kill them. That is a fact. If you're Hispanic in Fresno County, guess what? You're not looking so hot. And guess what? I resemble that remark. So you have to be careful. So if you're in the Hispanic population of this county, you have to be introspective and see, why is it that I am more susceptible? Am I, do I have an obesity issue? Do I have a diabetes issue? Do I have hypertension issues? Do I have other issues? And if I do, I stay home. I do shelter in place. I do try to avoid this killing virus. But I will not be held hostage by the virus. So mask wearing is very important for those that need it and in the right conditions. But if you're outside and the wind is brisk and there's nobody around you, or say if you're even driving a car with nobody else in the car, you might not need a mask. Okay? So let's not get hyperbolic about this. Let's take it in stride. We will overcome. Humans have actually survived pandemics in the past. This generation can do it as well.
Thank you, Jose. Just from my workplace, at the airport, we're about 50% of the way back as far as aircraft schedules and ridership. The international flights are ramping up and they're coming in full. So there's a lot of people who are coming and going, back and forth. We've had discussions about what are we going to do with people who refuse to wear a mask on an airplane? And we've had, I've had discussions with other airports about what are you going to do when someone gets on a plane and takes their mask off? And so we're trying to deal with that because at this point, there's no federal mandate or requirement. It's a industry policy. And, you know, basically if the captain wants them off the plane, we'll remove them from the plane. But it takes, it's going to take a lot more, probably, negotiation. So we're working on that end of it. But I think by probably two, three weeks from now, our business will probably have recovered probably at least 80%. So we're going to be seeing a lot more people coming and going. I don't know how this is going to affect that.
Jose? I claim to be pretty brave, but if I flew today, not only would I be wearing a real good mask, but even goggles because it's been shown. I trust the science, but let's get with the science. It's been shown that this virus can be introduced into your body through your eyes. Therefore, if I'm flying today in that confined space where everybody's breathing, everybody's talking, I'm wearing goggles. That's how brave I am. Okay? So masks are important in the right situations. And guess what? You might want goggles.
That's why I issued masks, goggles, and other protective equipment to my people in the first week of January when I saw this coming. So I, we are one stop away from pretty much anywhere in the world. So we're kind of in that boat. Anyway, that's all I have. Lynn, did you?
I would say I think what scares me is that they're going to shut the economy down again. That's what I think is going to happen. I just don't think these numbers, Fresno County had 500 cases today. Madera was shut down now on the county's watch, the state's watch. I just, I think this is the only thing we as citizens can do. It's not about, I'm not protecting me, I don't care about me, I'm protecting you, all that. So I'm not saying being a fetal, because nobody's saying that. I don't wear one, I drive my son, I go for a walk, I don't wear one. But I just think this is the only tool that citizens have to try to slow it down. So we can, we'll never have a healthy economy if people aren't healthy to go outside or too afraid to go outside. So I think there's a middle ground. And I, I mean, I agree with you on that. But I just think the leadership of just do this one simple thing to see if we can bring that curve down. Otherwise, I think we're going to get shut down again anyway. And I mean, the hospital situation is incredibly dire. Maybe my lens is dire because of what I do all day long. Valley Children's is days away from taking adult patients because the hospitals are full. That itself is pretty extraordinary for Valley Children's to take adults because hospitals are full. Community Medical Center's ER has 100 people waiting on any given day. So I just think that's the pressure. Our infrastructure is going to fail there, so this is the only tool we have. That's why I feel so strongly about the mask. It's just simple. So that's, that's all. Let's take our picture.
Let's take our picture.